Good evening, everyone. KIEMET School District, 132 Board of Education, February twenty twenty four.
Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar, Abson, Kimbrough, Love?
Here.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, here.
Led?
I would like to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval agenda, suggested motion, be hereby moved that the Board of Education approve the agenda for February twenty twenty four, where the session has presented the out of motion. Moved by Ms. Brown, second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Story.
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Abson, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Superintendent's report.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Evening. Tonight on superintendent's report, we have a few things to update you on. Let's start on a happy note. This is a video that was sent out to our entire district community that gives an update of the KIEMET School Gym Renovation Project. Greetings, Mission 132 students, staff, and community. I am so excited to share with you that the new gym renovation additional project, KIEMET Middle School, is going underway, and it looks amazing. The Henry Brothers General Construction Contractors have been working very diligently to ensure that our students have a beautiful building to walk into when school resumes in August of two thousand twenty four. Although there is still a ton of work that must be done to complete the facility, it's really shaping up. Take a look for yourself. So as you can see, as of February second, which is about a week and a half ago, they only had up about seventy-five percent of the building. Three days after that, the entire building was put up. As of right now, the joists and the beams are up. The roof is being laid on the short side of the building. Next week, they hope to lay the roof on the top. So by the end of next week, the entire building structure, as well as the roof, will be up. That's a great thing. We've been fortunate enough to have good weather over this winter, so that they didn't lose much time. So at this point now, we're on the rush and the mad dash to get the inside done, leveling the floors, putting the walls up for the classrooms. I had an opportunity today to walk with Mr. Corle, we have a weekly construction meeting, and I walked through the building, and I was totally amazed. As you can see in the video, it's interesting when you saw it, when it was just grass, and then they dug everything up, and then we have a full building. I've had a lot of positive feedback from members in the community. You see people just stopping in the middle of the street to watch. You see people, the neighbors, just standing there on that porch. One of the students saw our general contractor and said, "You all are lazy. Why does it take me you all so long?" And then three days later, the building was up, and the contractor went back and found a kid and said, "Are you all, are we lazy students?" And he's like, "No, you all work fast." So I'm really happy and excited to see the progress that we're making. This is going to be a great asset to this school district and this community. Any questions about the gym update?
I just got to say.
Ms. Harris, yes, ma'am.
That was the first time he driving past, and I see the building. It looks so different, but it looks good. It just looks like our school district, I mean, it looks full. The school looks full, so I like it.
I agree. All right, thank you. Next, we will have... There we go. Our HR Director, Roxanne Hughes, to provide the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five staff recruitment plan. Get down.
Okay.
I'm not getting on everybody. I have Roxanne Hughes Williams, HR Director here. This is not going to be known at all. So this is our recruitment plan for the two thousand four, twenty-five.
Mr. Corle is going to fix it.
Like this?
Okay, so this is our recruitment plan for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we have a few slides, just a few. Going to go over our goals, plans, partnerships, and actions. So our first slide is our goals. And we have three main goals. First one is to recruit and retain high-quality instructional staff. We're going to recruit staff that have genuine interest in our students' success and development, and also to employ a diverse staff that honors the culture and custom of our school and the community. So our plan is to ensure that each building is fully staffed by beginning of the school year with teachers and support staff by first day of school, plan. And then our next plan is to increase our staff in our special education department. So we want to hire a self-contained special education teacher for each building, for each self-contained class. Then we want to hire enough fair professionals to accommodate the needs of our students and support them with their IEPs. And then our next plan would be to hire instructional interventionists for each building, and they will provide direct support to our students. And then the last plan we have is to hire district-level content specialists, and they will provide support to all our teachers across the district. So our last two slides will be like action slides. So our first action will be partnership with colleges such as Chicago State, which we already have, Grand Canyon, Concordia, and Peoria Public School District. Peoria, I'm excited about that program because of the migrant situation that we have. We will do our best. We are going to, speaking of this, this is going to hire bilingual teachers to support our genuine visa teachers. Dr. Alexander can go into way more detail about it. And then our last slide will be an action slide, which is my plan to get these teachers. I have job fairs lined up on Saturdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, the whole month of February and March. And I'm also taking suggestions, if you have any suggestions, on how you think that we can recruit, attract, and attract more people, please let me know. My name is by myself, y'all need our help, so we can get this district's staff. Thank you.
Any questions, board members?
Ms. Roxanne?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Story?
Yes, my question is, I just have one. With the self-contained hiring of the self-contained teacher, does that mean we're going to have a self-contained classroom?
Yes. That's the goal, and I think that's been... I think that's probably been the goal of the district for a long time. One of the main issues is that when you have a teacher shortage, you have to do with, you know, maybe with what you have. But here's the reality. When we don't have that continuum of education, we're not truly supporting the kid. We can't go from giving general aid at District 132, and then two weeks later, they're the co-op. What about continuing? How are we pushing them through the system to see, are we able to support their needs here in the district? So I really appreciate the leadership of Dr. Harris and the SPED Department on this vision, and the reality is that we have to go down and do ten times more to find these teachers because our students desperately need the additional support. So that's our plan. Ms. Brown?
This is great, thank you. And are we, I know that we talked about parent mentoring program possibility, but have we looked at that more fully? It's a, that's a long-term goal, but there is money from the state to implement that parent mentoring program in suburban districts. So I'm happy to make the introduction, but it should be something we should think about as a career track for people that live in the city, in the village, who might want to be a teacher, who may be a parent now, but they might want to be a teacher later, so.
So I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea to, and we've been, so Roxanne talked about our partnerships. So one of them, when we started my first campaign, was with Grand Canyon, and that's kind of how we do our career home. But the issue is that that's a slow process. So we can institute that, but we may not see results for that for three to four years. At this point, we're in dire straits to make sure we're able to hit that to a level where every kid is getting what they need. So absolutely, we appreciate the idea, the concept. It's unfortunately a little more complex at this moment, but definitely down the road is something I think we can do.
Sure, and we've been talking about this, so I'm glad, I'm glad our hair is on fire finally, and that we are, we were saying this is an urgent issue, it has been for...
Well, I think our hair has been on fire, looking right at home. I think our hair has been on fire about this topic for a while, but I think reality sets in that District 132 and the other eight hundred fifty-one districts in the state, we're all suffering from a teacher shortage. But what we're recognizing is that more and more students are coming to us with special needs, and that starts a pre-camp, not even waiting until they get to third and fourth grade from a more biological perspective, autism, ADHD, things of that nature. So we have to really be proactive in nipping the problem in the bud and providing those students with early intervention at the younger grades, so that by the time they get to elementary and middle school, we've already pretty much got the handle. So yes, our hair is still on fire. Hopefully, this year, the tide has changed. Undernosed to me, as many people are looking for jobs, nobody wants to really be a teacher anymore. There are some political reasons by hiring that here in the state of Illinois individually, but we have to be creative. We sent out a correspondence to our staff yesterday or today from Grand Canyon University, one of our partner universities, and you can almost get your degree for five thousand dollars, a bachelor's or a master's, to teach without having any other credentials or certification. You can almost get a bachelor's or a master's for five thousand dollars. That's how desperate universities are. So universities are desperate, you know what's happening to the school districts. All right, next, board members, this is an update. We provide this to the board pretty much on a quarterly basis, and it's an update of where we are with our grants. And I wanted to bring this to the board's attention because we're not going to see this look the same way moving forward. So as you can see, let me step back a bit so you all can see. In this column right here, it talks about the amount that's been expended versus the percentage of the grants. And some of those amounts are in red. Those are areas where it's less than fifty percent of the grant has been expended. Then that far right column talks about our plan of action. Overall, we spent fifty-five percent of our grants for the school year. We're in great condition. The way school district grants work, and most of the grants in red are salaries, meaning you have to pay teachers for the rest of the year, and then in May, we complete the salary for the teachers over the summer. So a huge chunk of money will come out of these grants in the fourth quarter. In addition to that, we still have some S and three money, which is being used to pay for our gym. That S and three payment should come out in February. I'm expecting an invoice, which will deplete pretty much the rest of it. The science lab renovation is scheduled for this summer, and that will totally clear out S and three. So if you notice, there's three categories, yellow, green, yellow, and red. And those colors are not significant. I wanted to show, I wanted to break down. We have entitlement grants, which the district receives based on, it's an entitlement from the state to get it regardless of what you do. There's no real application for it. It's based on your student population, your demographics, low income, what have you. And then that's green. The yellow section is called conditional entitlement grants. And these grants are conditional based on some of the same factors of their demographics, but they're special grants, i.e. your school improvement. Burrow Elementary and KIEMET Middle School are both under state school improvement. Excuse me, so we receive additional funds to improve academics and to close the gap. And then you have competitive grants. Competitive grants come around every now and then, and based on whatever the criteria of the state is, you're allowed to apply for these grants. They're not entitlements, you're not guaranteed them, but if you win it, you win it. And those grants are for temporary, they're for certain purposes for a certain amount of time. All of our competitive grants right now are related to COVID. They're related to COVID, and on June, September thirtieth, when COVID money runs out, so are these competitive grants. So we have an after-school grant, a community partnership grant, and a Freedom School. And these grants were all ready for specific purposes, of which we've been following the plan. We still see that the community partnership and Freedom Schools, those grants have a pretty significant amount. Well, that's because, again, salaries attached to it and big-ticket projects that don't always happen in the early part of the year. So we are on track to expend all of our grants funding for this year. We are coming to the end of the third quarter, which ends on March thirtieth. So after March thirtieth, my team and I, we start looking at the grants, start looking at expenditures, and then we start writing amendments to the grants to spend the last few dollars that were either allocated, we just spent everything. So that's where we spend for the remainder of the school year. Next year, as I like to say, all of the funding money is gone. All the COVID money, the billions of dollars, we have the infrastructure building, all of that money is gone, all the competitive grants are gone. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five will look very much like a pre-COVID budget. So our budget will go from twenty-five, twenty-six billion back down to about sixteen, seventeen. I've already had this conversation with my staff about what it looks like, and I told them, you know, those rich people problems are over with. We have to bring ourselves down to a level of efficiency that's sustainable. I think our district is in outstanding financial shape as relates to our cash reserves. I have seen our preliminary audit, some of the numbers, and last year was an outstanding year for the district. However, you can't spend money like you're crazy and then think it's not going to impact you later. So from a financial perspective, we have to be able to make projections for five to ten years down the road. So looking at areas where we can be more cost-effective, looking at areas where we can take on more responsibility at the district level versus outsourcing, that will be our plan. So starting in March, we will begin the budget process across the district. My goal is to have the budget approved by the board by June thirtieth, so that we can operate a fully functioning board by July, a fully functioning budget by July one. And I look forward to the interactions with the board and administration on that process. Are there any other questions about the grants?
I have a question.
Ms. Dixon?
I noticed, like, for the eighth graders, they have to go on trips. Do these grants include their trip, trips as well?
Yes.
It does.
I made a commitment to the board and the staff that we would not charge students for field trips, after-school program, or any of that, since I've been here, we have not done it. So with making a commitment like that, especially seeing where your after-school program grants leaves, we have to really strategically budget to make sure that we can keep that commitment in the future. So we are continuing the practice of not charging students to go on field trips and clubs and activities, but we will have to make some strategic decisions moving forward if we want to keep that up. Ms. Brown?
And so strategy, I'm sorry, the ARP means what?
American Rescue Plan, COVID.
Okay, thank you. So what's the strategy for seeking out and pursuing additional grant funding of the young? We seem to have had a philosophical slowdown of that. What do you think?
So I think there's a philosophical misalignment about what grants mean in school districts. Everything that a school district needs to fund, everything that a school district needs to operate comes from your local property taxes, your state funding, or your federal funding. These grants that we have are from federal funding. So these are not private grants, whereas we went to a foundation or we had to write a competitive grant for an organization. These are all grants with ISB. So the term competitive grant is kind of confusing because in reality, it's still just regular federal, state, federal and state money that schools are forging. And so the way I operate, my first priority is to live within our entitlements, which is property taxes, state money, and federal. When you start talking about external grants, you have to be very careful what money you take, from who you take the money, and how you utilize it. At that point, you have a lot of masters to worship. You have to worship the state government, the Illinois government, accounting standards, as well as whatever organization gave you the money. So to my knowledge, and from my research in the past five years, this district has never had outside money, other than state and federal. This money, the ARP grants, they were only given because of COVID. So the state government, I think districts received ninety percent of the money from the federal government, and then states received ten percent, and the state could divvy it out how they wanted. So this is how they wrote it out. I can tell you, the Freedom Schools grant was an initiative by the Illinois Black Caucus under the Philip Jackson Freedom Act, where they wanted to emphasize the teaching of cultural studies, African-American history. So that was a limited pot of money that was just tied to that piece of legislation through COVID. So if the state allows us to apply for other grants, we will, that we qualify for. But grants outside of this green, your entitlement area, those are not normal for school districts. So again, we live within the confines of what we get entitled from the state, the federal, and our local property taxes, and then anything else is on top of the budget. Ms. Love, I saw you here.
Yes, I want to piggyback on the eighth graders. Okay, you said they won't be charged for field trips, but I pulled up the important information for eighth grade, eighth grade and dates to remember, and they're going to Chicago State University, that cost them twenty dollars.
The district pays for that.
Oh, it doesn't say that here. And it said Enchanted Castle Entertainment Center.
The district pays for that.
Okay, costs thirty dollars. And then they have the Springfield trip permission slip to follow, costs twenty dollars.
The district pays for that.
Paying for all of that?
So the only thing that the eighth graders, we pay all of it. The only thing that eighth graders pay, Ivy's round was fifty dollars, for their capping gowns, their little signature books, their favors. That's all they pay for. Everything else is paid for by the district. They do have to pay a thing for tickets to the banquet for their parents or something.
Yeah, that's.
But outside of that, the Avery field trips, all of the other field trips that our students go on, that's paid for by the district.
Okay, so their graduation payment should be made by this date, a minimum of forty dollars for the first part of the graduation, and then at the other part, it says, second and final payment should be made by this date. The cost graduation fee is eighty dollars.
It's eighty, not fifty, I'm sorry, that's my fault, it's eighty dollars. So two installments of forty dollars each.
Okay.
And that covers their stuff.
What is their stuff?
The capping gown.
Pictures?
No, pictures are separate. Those pictures could cost hundreds of dollars, depending on what the parent decides to get. But the capping gown, the autograph book, the ribbon, I think a T-shirt, something like that, is everything that they take home with them. That's what they're paying for as part of the graduation fee.
Shopping at for capping gowns. I know it's been a while since I bought capping gowns for my eighth grade graduation, but we've never spent eighty dollars per child for a capping gown, a ribbon, and an autograph book.
I can tell you, Ms. Love, we are extremely penny-pitching with eighty dollars. There's no profit whatsoever. And the reality, the district ends up picking up part of the bill because we have students that are considered homeless. They don't pay anything, so the district pays that. And even some students who are not homeless, they just don't have the means, so the district takes care of that as well.
Okay, so with this list, you know, I told them it's about two hundred dollars, the whole thing. And so the district is going to be doing good if they help pay the kids, pay for all this stuff, except for the capping gown and the graduation. So all of them will be allowed to attend all these events, right?
Absolutely, as long as, you know, you pay your, whatever your mental fee is, and you are in good shape.
No, I'm saying that you're going to take all the eighth graders to Chicago State.
Yes, ma'am, and Springfield and all of that.
Okay, who's allowed to go to Springfield? Who's allowed to go to Springfield and chaperone?
That's not up to me, that's the middle schools. That's, most of the chaperones are teachers. I'm not sure if they have any parents going, but most of them are, the districts have.
Okay.
I have a question for immigrants. Do we get any help for them?
As of right now, no. For the most part, they're, let me rephrase that. We don't receive money for migrants. We do receive money for students in temporary living situations through our McKinney-Bentham, so that's how we support them. There are some areas who they've always had a migrant population. It may not just be, you know, the ones we're receiving today, but some school districts always have migrant populations, so they receive money. But because that has not traditionally been a concern in our district, we do not have funds. But we do support that group with our Title Four McKinney-Bentham funds.
And I wanted to piggy, I wanted to say something about that. So me being down in Washington, DC, and I had the opportunity to go and talk with some of the legislators, there will be funding for migrants, okay? They're really focusing really on migrants in the school districts. Unfortunately, we don't have a big population of the migrants. Do you have how many?
We probably have about ten right now, plus migrants. How many?
Fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Three more, three more coming.
They are coming, we do have a consistent enrollment.
They are coming, but I do know a district, one sixty-eight, they have, they started off with ten, and now they up to sixty-five. So, and we were talking more so about then, I think the legislators are looking more into that versus teacher shortage, any monies for the school districts. But they are putting big money in getting bilingual teachers in the districts because of the migrants coming to school districts. So that's the big talk. So, that's the big talk now, but there's, there's quite a few other themes that's probably going to be coming to you, Dr. Alexander.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, from there, that's.
And then last, I will talk about the Rain Ready Project. So, back in November, Board Member Brown connected us, the district, to the Rain Ready Organization to discuss the feasibility of doing a rainstorm water renovation project at Burrow School. Our district facilities director, Mr. Corley, our engineer, as well as our architect, we met with the Rain Ready people, looked at some of the plans that they had, and what they were proposing necessarily did not work for the district for various reasons, inclusive of the location, the maintenance that was required and so on. So, we had subsequent walkthroughs where they continued to ask, what type of support do you need? And really just trying to be innovative and supportive, I'm thinking of projects, thinking of stuff, coming up with stuff. And I made a recommendation, let's look at the playground at Burrow Academy. And the playground at Burrow Academy is in good condition. The only thing with it is it's not ADA accessible because it's mulch. So, we do have students in wheelchairs and who have other disabilities. So, it was my thought, well, if we can get a playground renovated, you can roll a wheelchair, the kid could play. So, nothing that we have on the agenda to do just because at this point our playground, it's in good condition, but if we have a partner offering to do something, I would definitely like to look at it. We've had conversations with Rain Ready. They've talked about trying to figure out if it's available or they can do it, if they can fund it. And at this point, we really have not made a, any headway as because, well, primarily because we don't have drawings, renderings, what's the cost, is this legal? Just because it's a gift to the district essentially, there's extra work that you have to go through and more I's and T's that you have to make sure you cross. So, they have a rather short timeline that they have to follow for their funding, which may not work for the district. But we are at this point awaiting information to come to our attorneys, of which our attorneys will give the board recommendations and see if this is something we want to move forward with. So, that's pretty much all I have for Rain Ready, which is kind of not much, but it was, we have had conversations. At this point, we're just waiting on attorneys and all of our professional service people to give insight. Ms. Brown, I saw you. Oh, Ms. Dixon.
I have a question about this thing. Why is it we just?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Why isn't it at the board? You said you had several conversations about it, but yet it hasn't been brought before the board, before you've had your conversations. So, as a board member, I'm wondering how, did we, did the lawyer look through anything where we, he's charging us? Because there's nothing free. It's something, it, it, there's no such thing as anything free. Someone's getting something from it. So, again, I want to know how was, all of this was arranged without us going and agreeing upon it and go, you know, move forward with it? And it's wonderful if it's something that's good for our community, but again, I want to say that's my problem because we don't, we do not move like that, we're not functioning like that. Board members take it upon their self to do things opposed to asking, and no one can speak for me. We all have one individual vote, vote here. And I have a problem with that because why are we sitting here? If each one of us can bring you a project without you coming back to us to see if it's okay to move forward, what's the purpose of us sitting here?
Ms. Harris.
So, piggybacking what you're saying, that we do have a policy that it has to be a board decision and that the board, one individual board member does not act as an entire board, and that's two code of one hundred, board member conflict of interest. So, if you guys feel a cop up is here, but then we also have in the code of conduct, it does stipulates number one and number two, and that we took an oath and we did agree as a board, I would not represent all school districts, constitute honestly and equally and refuse to surrender my responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups. I would avoid any conflict of interest or appearance of improperly, which could result from my position and will not use my board membership for personal gain or publicity. So, we do have things in place, but as I stated to Ms. Brown, there was a meeting at the Rec, at the Rec, sorry, the recreational center. I was going to bring it back to the board and she, she asked, because she bring it back, and that was back in November. Nothing was said. So, it was an email to the superintendent asking to, to pretty much meet with these people. And so, I just felt that that was going backwards. So, again, it is protocol that we're supposed to, as a board, discuss it before anything is being done. And yes, the attorney was looking into it, so is the architects, I guess engineers and who else?
My staff.
And the staff, they were all in the meeting. So, prior to, it should have been talked about and discussed here first. And if that's something that maybe superintendent could have brought to the board and say, hey, I feel that this needs to be done, then we can probably move forward, but it's been done backwards. So, yes, this doesn't look really good as one board member move forward with the company and use the staff.
I have, I have two questions, Dr. Alexander. How much were they talking about with the meetings that you've been to? How much were they talking about giving to the schools?
So, if, they wouldn't, they necessarily were not going to give the school anything. They were going to spend their money through investments or however they did it. But the conversation was, it's possible that it could be about four hundred and fifty thousand.
So, my second question is, I know I've heard it at a board meeting. It was just a, here it is about the Rain Ready and we were asking about it. And then that's when we found out that Board Member Brown was a part of that committee because she's a community member. So, I was just wondering, because right now it's in discussion. You, there was nothing decided on it. We listened to it and given us an update and letting us know that you was in discussion about it. Because if, if we can, with every project you think for four hundred and fifty thousand that they provide to us, that's a good thing. So, just my thing is just continue with the discussion we're hearing, and this is the second time because I know that we, it was a little in depth about the Rain Ready Project because we all want to know what is that? Because I didn't know about it as well, but it was good that you have had some conversations and I just wanted to know the dollar amount because anything that comes to our district is a good thing.
So, you're saying that it's okay for him, because you're speaking in one voice, that the superintendent, are you giving a directive for yourself?
I did not give a directive. I asked about how much money and he was already in the discussions and he was bringing it back to the board.
And you said continue with your discussions.
You been having, did you say you had another discussion or you was just in the discussions, was nothing finalized?
Nothing had been finalized.
Thank you.
And the reason why it was, it came up because Ms. Brown stayed here, she was getting a stipend. You stated that you would get a stip, you get a six hundred dollar stipend and that you were going to be donating, buying books rather, and donating the books. But at the end of the day, you still receive a stipend from this organization. So, that was the reason why I stated that it was a conflict and it was brought to you. So, it should have been brought to us first as a board.
And I appreciate that, except you, you have been CC'd on every correspondence I've ever sent to this superintendent. It's sad that you want to play politics, but that's okay. I mean, you can see who you want to see and be clear about what you want to be clear about. There's been no, I act as a Rain Ready member as a citizen, not as a board member. If you read the report, the school district has been in the report prior to my arrival on the board and prior to my, to the Rain Ready work, it is, I knew the work. The school district was part of the twenty sixteen win. I was on the board in twenty sixteen. So, I was asked to share the committee, I am one, I am one vote. There were several votes, a member, a member that voted for some projects. This is ARPA money, it's going to go away. I mean, if you all don't want to spend more to get, at least have access to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's on you. I am using my stipends so that there wouldn't be a conflict. And I've been presenting and will present the full accounting of the money that I spent. I've not, I have not benefited financially from any of this, the school district has. If you want to pursue some legal something or another, I invite you to do so.
And I do, and I do thank you, Ms. Brown, but it was only brought up for the fact of how the, how the process goes. This is not a political thing, this is policy. Policy overrules everything and we're supposed to govern by policy. So, Ms. Brown, just let me think, I never interrupted you. So, that was the reason why I'm stating what I stated. It is awesome that we have an organization that wants to do something, right? They were in the process of working with Calumet Village, okay? But I'm, I'm stating that how the process goes, you should already know, is that you bring it, you use your two minutes, you talk to us, we discuss it as a board, and guess what? If that's the decision of the board, we give the superintendent a directive and he can go in discussions as normal, as he's been doing. But how it looks is you reached out to the superintendent first and you gave him a directive as one individual board member to look into something and to bring along his staff, engineers, architects. It was worked backwards. So, that is the reason why I'm stating what I'm saying. So, how it should have been is gone and bringing it here, and that's what the issue is. The issue is, it's not the playground, it's not the children. Children is number one, that's why we're sitting here. But the issue is, is how it was done, and that's why I'm saying, moving forward, we can't work like that.
I agree.
So, can you agree that how you went about this was out of order?
I cannot agree because I did, I did exactly what you just outlined. We have the state's attorneys, we were doing, we do cancer walk. One board member decides that, we do state attorneys, sex, sex trafficking, one board member does that. I did bring this under my two minute comment way back. I CC'd you on this. If you had an objection, then you should erase it. To use this forum to accuse me of misconduct is disrespectful. That's all I got to say. If your attorney seems to think that I've done something illegally, I invite you to send me whatever you're going to send me. If you all want to not use this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's on you.
And again, I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon, but if this wasn't anything that I chose, I don't get paid, we don't get paid. It was brought up the fact that, it's the first time we hearing that you were on the committee. I didn't know that. You were getting a stipend, we didn't know that. We didn't know that till last month's meeting. We didn't know that until last month's meeting that you said that. It's being recorded.
I know.
So, you can go back and look at that on YouTube, but the bottom line is that this, that was the first time ever we talked about it. So, therefore, we can take a consensus, okay? We can do so, but at the end of the day, Ms. Brown, it was not done in order. It was not done in order. Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
I just want to say this, I've been preaching this, saying this since I've been on this board. This board, people do what they want to do, when they want to do it. They speak to, they speak to the staff the way they want to do, they do what they want to do. And I didn't sign up for that. I signed up for something to help the kids, to make sure we move forward as a board. It's so many presidents sitting here, you don't know who follows. I'm sure he doesn't. So, my thing is, why can't we can't do it in order? Why if we have something, because I'm sure all of us have something to bring to the board. If we have something to bring to this board, we should do it accordingly. Come to the board, stay where we have to stay and then move forward. You have lawyers, you have contractors. Money, all money is not good money. I don't care how much money it is. So, one may say that, that's how I feel personally, and I own one vote. But again, if it's something good, I'm all open for it. But what I, what I do have a problem with, how you all step in front of people and you don't have respect for the system of the program. That's, that's my problem. And I'm, I'm done.
I just, one more thing, I do want to say this. It was brought up, I mean, I'm just sad to the board. I hear he said all money is not good money, the whole thing, he just went through all of the grants. If we can provide something for the students, like he said, potentially the playground or whatever him and his team decide to bring back, is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, are we not sending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for students and this is still up towards the stu, geared towards the students? So, like, like you said, like everybody said, we just want to vote. But I do know, I found out last month that she was on that committee as a community person. And she did bring it to the board and a lot, it was under discussion. So, didn't nothing happen, we didn't decide, we didn't vote, we hurried, so it's up for discussion. And now Alexander was bringing it back. So, I mean, I'm just one person, I don't understand what is the big deal. If you're going to press charges, Madam President, then Consular, she said she welcomes it.
And, and Ms. Doris, I guess you guys are really missing the point, but I understand, but that's, that's the roles and responsibilities as board members. So, the thing about it is that, yeah, last month it was brought up. And again, superintendent just said, it's been talked about. It was brought to his attention from Ms. Brown in November. Nothing was talked about or discussed in November or December. January, I cannot remember, did you talk about it in January?
Yes, well, we did.
In what?
We had a, at the board meeting, we had a walkthrough.
Oh, you had a walkthrough, again, that's not with the board. You and your staff, the architect and the Rain Ready Organization did a walkthrough.
That's correct.
And you put that in the board's update, am I correct?
That's correct.
The board did not say for anyone to do a walkthrough and give a okay, am I correct? The board did not say do a walkthrough? Did the board say it was okay to do a walkthrough?
Well, I received a record from a board member.
Exactly, one board member, one board member. And this is what I'm saying, the bottom line is from November, December and January, did I do the months right, November, December, January? And then last, then last month, I mean, you brought up the fact that you were getting a stipend. We're just talking about board conduct. We're not speaking about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we don't even know if these people are going to be giving us anything, if they even have it. Nothing has been given like in black and white. I'm speaking in terms of board conduct, how things are supposed to be. Can you please at least agree with what I'm saying?
So, no.
So, I, I guess, okay, you know what? I really appreciate it. Dr. Alexander, thank you for your presentation. So, we're going to move forward. So, we're going to talk about number six, consent agenda items. Suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda A, Items A, B, C.
Yeah, question.
As presented. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Kimbrough, may I have a second? Second.
Question.
And second by Ms. Dixon. Question?
We're recommending that we remove the accounts payable from the consent agenda, their request, their approvals for contracts that haven't been approved by the board. It doesn't seem fitting to have this discussion.
Can't hear you really good.
So, it does not seem fitting to have a conversation about the accounts payable of this particular dumpster until we have a conversation with the summer programs. So, I'm asking that we remove the accounts payable from the consent agenda item to be discussed after we've had a conversation about one of the vendors that's on the accounts payable that has not been approved yet for payment. I also am asking Dr. Alexander if all board members have paid back monies for trips.
I can get that answer to you.
It was motion by Ms. Kimbrough and second by Ms. Dixon. May I have a roll call?
Yes. Brown?
A, B, C. Is that a question that, that Dr. Alexander, did you get that question? About their contract that wasn't being, wasn't approved?
I, I think she's asking, uh, so in, in the board packet, we have the contract, the invoices for the spring break camp. Uh, and by approval call, we have to put that in, uh, now because of the spring break camp is next month. So we have to make those payments, so they're in the board packet for approval now. Uh, contingent upon the board approving the plan tonight. So if the board doesn't approve the plan, it's just as easy as pulling those invoices. But because of the way our treasurer's office works, we have to put those invoices into the bill or not to be approved by the board.
So we're getting ready to have a discussion, right? So about the spring break, cause I remember we talked about this last month. Did we, Ms. Story, did we roll call? Okay, so you wanna?
I'm just asking to move or to take it up a consent agenda.
And then we will put on when, will we gonna have?
It's on the same agenda, but after we can vote on it separately after we have a conversation about the, the camp. I don't feel comfortable approving a, 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 a vendor.
But you said, you pleased, you might, we can't hear you.
So I'm not comfortable approving a vendor claim that was, was hasn't approved. We have a vendor, we're asking to send money for vendors that have not.
What number is that?
She's asking to move, uh, hold A two.
A two?
Yeah.
May I have a motion to table A two? So, we just?
So the motion is to ta-, to remove A two from consent agenda and to vote on it after discussion of the vendors. So still vote on it, it's made.
Okay, so even though we did a motion on the A, A, C.
Yeah, there, the, that's fine, we can do that, yes, that's okay.
All right, so you move, Ms. Story?
Yeah, Ms. Kim, uh, Ms. Kimbrough, motion?
Yeah, we're doing an A two.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So, who motioned?
Do we have to take a motion to, I'm just asking, we have to have a motion to remove it? Because usually when we ask something to remove, we just remove it. We just remove it, so now it's different? No, cause usually when we actually remove something, we just remove, we don't vote, we just remove it and vote on the other items. That's what we been doing.
She asked to table it.
Right.
So, we have to take a consent.
And then still will be, still discussing?
Yes, yes, we, so, um, who, who motioned it?
No, I'm just getting clarity.
But who motioned, well, we're doing it, we're.
Clarity is.
We're tabling it for discussion, so that.
But you just declared. When we actually, Madam President, to re- Just clarity, when we ask you to remove an item, you just remove it, and that's what we been doing. Now what I'm hearing, that we have to vote to remove that item, to vote on all the rest of the consent agenda item, and then we'll come back to that. So are we changing in the extreme here?
Uh, you do not have to formally move or vote to remove an item from consent agenda, you can just move it out um at the request of a board member. Um, that said, there's no fault in voting either, but I don't think it's required.
But is the rest of the board okay with it? That's what I'm asking. It's only.
We are okay with it, it's the way we've been doing it.
I'm just asking.
Yes, we are okay with it, we've been doing it that way, plus the attorney just said, it's okay.
And I'm just asking, is the rest of the board okay with it?
We're gonna vote on it after.
Yes, you say, you okay with that? All right then, so A, B.
It's A one.
A one, B, C, yes. And motion was by Kimbrough and second by Dixon.
That's correct.
Okay, roll call.
Yes, Brown?
Yeah.
Dixon?
Yeah.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Items A one, B, and C, carry.
Now, A two?
I think she wants to go through the agenda items, so we can talk about the plan first and approve that and then come back to approve the spending. Correct, Ms. Brown?
All right. Um, Reddys Action Items, Approval of Science Lab Renovation. Suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approves Henry Brothers Company to complete the science lab renovations project at Calumet Middle School in the amount of two hundred and twenty thou-, twenty-two thousand dollars as presented. They have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Kimbrough and second.
Second.
And second by Ms. Dixon. Any questions?
I have questions. Uh, I wrote on this, uh, what is in front of us? Is there a proposal or something? What is he gonna do for two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars? Where's the proposal that we can look at and see what, what designs and stuff he's gonna change to? Is that on here?
So, that's been.
Was that already, when?
We presented that to the board already, so at this point, and, and I apologize, Ms. Love, this process actually happened before you came to the board.
Okay.
And so we've already gone through the process, tonight was, is only the bid. So we had to, the design was approved by the board, everything's approved. And then tonight, we're approving the, um, the bids that came through.
So you want me to vote on something that I know absolutely nothing about? Correct. Since I wasn't on the board when it was approved.
And this is about sci- science?
I don't care what it's about, if I don't know about it, then I don't know about it, whatever it is.
The, the information was in our board packet.
He said it was presented before I came to the board.
I know, but the information about the proposal is in our board packet.
This, what that hit?
Yes.
I pulled it up and I didn't see it, and I copy everything that's in my board packet, unless it's so small that.
So what's in your package tonight?
Ms. Love, is the recommendations from the architect as well as the bid tabulation, so.
Exactly.
The, the schematics are not, the schematics are hundreds of pages long, so that is not in the board packet.
Of course not. So, but you still want me to vote on something that I know absolutely nothing about?
Okay.
Yeah, I just recall seeing, um, I guess it was a blueprint or something of the labs, I recall seeing that before.
Yes, ma'am.
Several times, actually, so is that what we're looking at?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Uh, so roll call?
Yes, Brown?
I'm gonna state.
Okay. Dixon?
Yeah.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
She said yes.
Yeah, okay, Harris?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Thank you. Approval of purchase of technology equipment. Suggested here, suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approves the purchase of three hundred Chromebooks, one hundred per building from ClearCorp in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars and sixty-five cents, I'm sorry, sixty-five dollars, utilizing Title I funds as presented. May I have a motion?
May I have a motion?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kim, Kimbrough.
Okay, question. So, um, maybe somebody can help me, I, I'm not sure I understand completely, it says the least competitive bid. So we did that, and this, which is why I had to explain from the last book, we, we seem to have done the lowest bid, and this one we have not. Um, can somebody just clarify why we can apply this not required for a specific bid?
Ms. Ma, I'm gonna give it, um, thank you, Ms. Ma.
Ms. Ma, as she pulls up her presentation, so when we, uh, per the, the state purchasing laws, there's certain bids, uh, certain things you have to go out for bids, certain things you have to go out for contracts, meaning you just have to have multiple quotes and then you pick the most responsible bid. And so for this, uh, particular, um, project, the least bidder did not meet all the requirements of what we needed. So that's why we went with the second, that's which was ClearCorp. And Ms. Ma, can you just jump to that slide where you talk about that? Right there, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Ma.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Uh, the, the purpose of actually getting the quote is for the competitive bid. It's, it's not where we just simply decide that we want to have this one particular vendor. Uh, so it takes some time in terms of getting all of those, uh, quotes then from the ones that we prefer, uh, and that's based on the relationship that they have with the district, and then also getting other opportunities. So you do see a, a lesser, a less expensive amount. However, my concern, uh, and what I shared with our superintendent, was in looking at the invoices, it appeared that there was a ten dollar, uh, charge that they were not placing on the actual invoice, and they out of cart all of the items versus putting the devices uh, their price, and then they out of cart the warranty. So when you, when you send that to me and, and the benefit of the district and the money that we're spending, then I'm looking at that as, uh, how in the comparables, when I go back to uh, ClearCorp's actual price, uh, SHI would have come out about the same. And so, uh, and the other reason to that is the relationship that any management company would have with the vendor. If, if, SHI actually called a couple of days later to ask when we'd be actually making the decision, which means that their relationship with the vendor does not meet our needs when we become before the board. So that, that means that they're either playing around with price trending, they wanna make sure that, um, they need to get their money or the profit that they wanna get from this particular vendor, that they get it in before we make our decision. We need to be with the vendor that will work with our timeline and not on, on their timeline. We need, we need them to look at the client as to what we need, and that's pretty much what we work here. So we, we can't be on the deadline, I'm thinking, they need to be on ours.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ma. May I have a motion? Oh, no, sorry, roll call.
Is Brown?
I'm gonna state.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
It's tied, motion failed.
No. We, we guess two of them.
I'll take the motion, carry.
Yes.
Gonna take my.
No, no.
Thank you. Number C, Approval of Spring Break Camp Plan. Suggested here, hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the spring, I'm sorry, approved the twenty-twenty-four Spring Break Camp Plan at the total of forty thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents as presented. May I have a motion? Thank you, uh, second?
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Story and second by Ms. Dixon. Question?
Um, a couple of questions, one of which is, uh, we, we have a vendor uh, who's doing business as one person, and so the, the high rate creations, uh, and then we have payment for, um, Marquita, can't speak. Uh, so is she a LLC, a sole proprietor? How is she doing with this?
So she is a, um, in a state of Illinois, you're not required to be a LLC, you can operate as a business in your own name, however, you don't have to use your name, so Kira's creation is her DVA, um, but it is listed under her own name.
And so, um, and, and she charges, she's trying, did we have food for the, um, the benefit this month?
Yes, we did.
And we pay ten dollars a person?
Yes, that was, that was the way that we gave the vendors that they had to stay with them.
And so she's charging us ten dollars for, like, it's three months, but one, thirty-one dollars for two meals for this one event?
So it's, I mean, that they get breakfast and lunch every day, so, um, that's probably comparable to what we're paying for our regular school lunch every day. Uh, and it's a, it's a, I mean, it's a pretty hearty meal that the kids get, they actually love it, they all love it, and there's none left.
It, yeah, and I, I don't dispute that, but if she could charge us ten dollars per person uh, for one event, but charges thirty-one dollars per person for one extra meal, um, and it seems like it's a pretty hearty meal, I wonder if we did some. I have to admit that I'm now joking, that it feels like we're the Dollar Tree. Everything is fifteen thousand dollars, that's our, uh, so I don't know, we, I think I would like to at some point have a conversation about uh, how we're engaging in contracts and agreements, um, but, um, contractual conversations, either fees, uh, cause everything seems to be a magic fifteen thousand or fifteen five hundred. Um, I don't know if we actually have, in fact, a particular, um, amount that we're willing to pay a vendor, but it feels to me like we could have probably negotiated, uh, she's willing to do it to ten and be adding an extra mail, but it feels to me like that's twenty and not thirty-one.
So last year, the total for food service was fourteen thousand five hundred. So this year, there's a thousand dollar increase, look inflation, uh, transportation, all of that. So the price that we're paying is consistent with what we paid in the past.
Okay. Okay, I'm on the same road that she's on. It's three thousand dollars for one hundred children, well, it stated as seventy-five to one hundred children, for one, for, uh, per day, for one week, five days. So you're spending fifteen hun-, fifteen thousand dollars for one week for one hundred children. You know, it's nice to have a hot meal, but for five days for just one hundred children, that's quite a lot. And it doesn't matter what you did last year. The norm is not acceptable anymore to me. You can't keep doing the same thing that you did pre-pandemic or right after the pandemic. You have to change some things. The children have changed, they are not the same as they were before the pandemic. These kids are more traumatized now than they were before. And you have to adjust to the situation, and you have to adjust your money too. And just because you did it in the past, does not mean that it's right to still be doing it. I mean, we have to be fiscally, you know, accountable, but three thousand dollars a day for one hundred kids for two meals? That's ridiculous, thirty-one, thirty-one dollars.
Thank you, um, may I say something?
Please do. I know I go to the grocery store and a pack of chicken wings is nine ninety-nine. Now, uh, one pack, six wings. So when I can remember, it was, used to be like six dollars a pack? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Don't you hold sale, I'm sure she does hold sale.
Roll call, please.
Brown? Brown?
Yeah, I said she does.
No. Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
No, let's talk about the food.
We're not talk, come on, we vote. Okay, yes.
She said no?
She said no.
All right, Harris?
Yes.
So board of faculty asked.
Please, go right there.
Wha-, wha-, what's our next step? We've already started to put things in motion as it relates to, uh, students being there, the, the the Park District, you know, they're getting prepared, so what direction do you have for me at this point?
Well, well, you've already paid the lady fifteen thousand dollars.
That's not fair.
Oh, yes it is, I pulled it up, don't tell me, I'm looking at the thing.
Ms. Love, so the way the bills work, everything that we pay goes to the board, as we're doing tonight to pay the payables. And then upon board approval, we go into the decision to say the payment is authorized, and then checks are sent. Nothing has been sent as of yet. And I stated earlier in the meeting, that if the board decided not to move forward, we would pull that individual invoice and not pay it. So nothing has been paid.
Oh, none of these things that you have here?
No, ma'am, nothing has been paid.
Okay, but they would, they be paid?
Okay, but they would, they be paid?
Pending board approval, if the board approves tonight, they will go out the mail tomorrow morning.
Yeah, but.
Uh, what day do you use to set these bills up?
The, the, we operate on the treasurer's office. So the treasurer's office controls all bills. So usually, everything is entered the treasurer's office by the end of the month so that it can make it to the board report uh, for the third Thursday here in the district.
Okay. So when does she type up this report here or do you do this?
We've been working on this program for probably five to six months. So we, we're just following our timeline so that we can make sure that everything happens and the camp is next month.
Dr. Alexander, with the.
Yes, ma'am.
You asked for next steps. If, with, if the board approved, if we can renegotiate with the food and agree to uh, go forth with the summer camp, with the, I mean, with the spring break camp. Cause uh, it was really, really nice. But since all of this is embedded into one with the food is, is seem like it's a concern, but we could kind of renegotiate that amount for the food. And then we could go forth with this, um, spring break camp itself.
So I have no problem doing that, Ms. Story. But what I will say to the board is, as I said earlier, last year, we paid fourteen thousand five hundred for this program. And since then, inflation has hit, things cost more. So it, it's not as easy to go back to a vendor to say, and I, I'll be quite honest. I think ten dollars is a steal uh, for the meals. Because when you, our price of meals that we feed the kids in school has gone up. And most of that stuff, um, is, is cold, raw, and it's not cooked. So for us to ask a vendor to change that price, I think we're putting ourselves in a bad spot. Yes, ma'am, it is part of the.
Is this part of a grant?
Yes.
To the board members, is this part of a grant? Think about that because we do have to spend our grant money as well.
You know, this, this the problem I have. Now, this lady who uh, has this business, she's self-employed, uh, this is her business, right?
Yes, she is.
Okay, why is it when you have African-American uh, self-employed, we got no paying attention for her? Yes, it has a lot to do with it.
So, uh, this is, that's why she has Ms. Dixon, because Ms. Dixon didn't interrupt you guys.
This woman have a livelihood. She has to go and like I said, chicken wings are expensive. And one day I went in the store, everything was nine ninety nine, and I don't care what it was. I said, wow, everything's nine ninety nine. Everything has gone up. So would you want to feed them bologna sandwiches?
This is a grant, so again, you, you failed, so let's move on. Um.
Okay.
Close session.
One more question.
Wait, you gotta do.
So I'm, I'm gonna say this.
Alexander asked a question to us.
I'm gonna go and say this, we're moving on, okay? So, letter D, approval of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school calendar. Suggested mo- motion, being hereby moved at the Board of Education. Approve the public school calendar for school, for the twenty twenty four school year as presented. May I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Ms. Dixon. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Kimbrough. Roll call, John.
Brown?
I think there was a question.
Questions? I just.
There's a motion on the floor. Um, roll call.
Brown?
Uh, I'm gonna have to vote no. There's no discussion yet. Sorry.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough? Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay. Approvals, I'm sorry. Letter E? Letter E? I know, I'm just going, I'm going. So letter E and letter G. We're gonna table that and take into closed session and then uh, we're moving on to public comments. If you intend to speak, please completely fill out a question and comments form as presented to the superintendent's secretary at this time. The board will be prepared to address those comments related to the agenda within a reasonable time. However, the comments may be forwarded to the superintendent as an individual response. No other discussion or action will take place. Please remain seated until you are recognized by the board president. Every person intending to speak must come to the podium to state their comments. Please state your name. Comments will be limited to three minutes.
There's one.
Thank you.
Janet Harrison.
Mr. Carter, you know what these are, but they're. I know why I haven't been coming these weeks. I got a call from a resident that asked me to come, but I'll tell her next time she can come. Let me tell you one thing. Dr. uh, Alexander, don't take it personally. But I'm gonna tell her about what happened too. And they're in court and I cannot reveal anything about it. Their superintendent was businessman. And he ran out of district with money. FBI caught up with him. So the board management, they're listening. He has misused so much money. The money that he misused, board members at the paychecks. You sit here and you vote on stuff, that, that, that's not another superintendent in the state of Illinois that's a superintendent and a businessman. And don't tell me you can't get business manager, because I called today and they got a whole list of them. So you can get a business manager. But I'm gonna tell you something. If it comes down to this, I'm gonna stir up this community like you have never seen in your life. And I am really serious about this. If you're gonna be on a board, be on a board. If you're gonna be a, a BS, then you need to be off the board. This is absolutely unbelievable. You don't ask any questions. The board president is not always correct. You, God gave you, he said he gave you eyes, uh, ears to hear and eyes to see. And you need to start hearing and seeing what's going on on this board, cause this board is not right. It's not right. And, and this is so pathetic. You think people are gonna come out and see garbage like this? We don't. And uh, only district one thirty two could do this. No other district in the whole world could do this. Use this past Monday for President's Day, when President's Day is the nineteenth. I have never, ever, and I have a lot of connection, I called. They said no, they didn't do that. This is a federal holiday and you are gonna take it on Monday rather than the nineteenth? There's something wrong with you alls. And you need to go home and look in them, in the mirror and say, what am I doing wrong? And I tell you, if you don't know what you're doing, you need to read or you need to hear or you need to ask. Consuela, Sheriff, or Pauline, they're educators. And you're sitting up here with this garbage, you can laugh all you want to, man, that, it doesn't faze me.
Thank you so much. Okay, four-year update?
We just had one since the last board reading. And that's me, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Policies first read, press plus, one thirteen.
I have a question.
Question?
Yeah. Question again about the policies. I know it was a committee of the whole meeting called, it was for policies. But back in, um, June, the policy two colon one fifty was changed and it was voted on. But it also has standing committees, where board policy committee is in here, but we do not have a policy committee. Then it also says committee of the whole parent teacher advisory committee and behavioral interventions committee. It states the board president makes all board committees subject to board approval. So once again, I asked before about a policy committee. Um, those of us could be on the policy committee, because we have a first read here in our packet and the policies are a hundred and two, they're policies. Now, four of those policies, or five of them, are that board have to vote on something. It's a yes or no. So if that's the case, if we don't have a committee, then I guess we'll stay here because you asking us to, for the first read. And some of these policies we have to discuss. That's why it was a board policy committee and according to our policies, which you chose said a policy about Consuela, then this policy two colon one fifty says the same thing. A board policy committee is under a standing committee. So board president, we need to um, appoint a policy committee so we can have the separate meetings, so we can have these first reads.
And thank you so much, but that's not how it literally goes. Go to your, go to your, uh, your workshops. The things about it is that we had a meeting, we were supposed to meet, you guys did not show up.
Because you told us at the last minute.
No, ma'am.
And also you never took a poll.
No, ma'am.
You just said this is the date.
No, ma'am.
And, and the board, did, did she ask you?
So, no, ma'am.
Did she ask you?
No, ma'am. I didn't, excuse me. Okay, what I'm not gonna do is, I'm not gonna go back and forth.
I, I just want to read policy.
It pertains, right. And when there was a meeting called, you guys chose not to be present.
Attend, you never polled the committee.
That you would, but then.
And I came back and I said I couldn't attend.
So again, you guys choose not to meet when you don't wanna meet and talk about and discuss about things. That's how the committee of the whole is. That's the whole entire board, sit together, have discussion and talk about the policies. You're wanting it as a what?
It's in the policy committee that you voted on.
We voted on a committee of the whole.
Okay, policy.
I don't need to see that, Ms. Story. Please don't bring it.
It's right here, it's on the website.
Voting on committee of the whole.
But it is in here.
So we're not going back and forth, I'm done with that.
This is on the website.
So board reports.
I'm not gonna argue, but this, we are obligated to.
Or reports, we're moving forward now.
When we, when we get this about the whole, going as a whole. We were asked, uh, Mrs.
Ms. Love.
Kimbrough asked, can we sometimes, can we go back?
We're, we're on something else now.
Oh, we always on something else. Always think that you write about everything, but you're not.
Thank you.
You're not. I don't wanna argue, but it does say this. So I'm saying this so it could be on record. Please, can you put this, please, on the agenda for next month? So we could create a policy committee.
Four members that want to use their two minutes. Does anyone want to use their two minutes?
I do. According to the policy.
Excuse me, Ms., Ms. Story.
I didn't do much.
Ms., Ms. Story, what I'm gonna ask you is.
I'm gonna sit down, but I didn't do my two minutes.
This is not what you're gonna do. The thing is that you have to respect the board meeting, okay? Do not do that. Do not be disruptive to the meeting. Please don't.
If you felt, I apologize.
We're being disruptive. I asked you. I didn't call you. You were just speaking about policies. So now we on something else. We on board, board two minutes? Thank you. So, uh, are you doing two minutes?
Yes.
Are, are you gonna do two minutes? So, cause we're not gonna do this. We have audience here, we're gonna be very respectful. That's what we're gonna do.
Nothing about this move was respectful tonight.
We have the two minutes for board, uh, board meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
I do, I just would say the webinars I have attended, um, that you guys have set up was awesome. I think that you have a lot to do for the kids while they're at home to have, uh, able to learn, to advance in their education. I think you all should continue to do what you're doing. And again, I am so tired of people saying, and I, and I know this is not professional and I, please forgive me. But I am so tired of people saying, you know, we're the educated people, the educated people. We all live at, what's the zip code? What is this zip code, six oh eight two seven? Okay, educated people. We all live in the same zip code. So again, again, you're not in Peel Hill Park somewhere, you're in Calhoun Lake Park with, uh, the uneducated people. However, forgive me, I just need a sense of laughter here. This is just a bit much for me. Um, staff, please continue to do what you're doing and hopefully we can, we can move on one day.
Ms. Harrison, can you please?
Ms., Ms. Harrison, I'm telling you.
I'm, I'm just asking, can you please? Can you please just be respectful? We're still in the meeting. Can you please respect the meeting?
You don't wanna go there, but this is hers.
Ms. Harrison, can you please? We're, we're trying to conduct the meeting, please. Yes, we're trying to conduct the meeting. Thank you. All right, so who's next? Ms. Brown?
So, um, one more time, I'm, I'm gonna just be as transparent as I possibly can. Uh, the, there's some books in the back. I, I, I did this meeting a third time. This is the second time I think I've shared this, rather than uh, created appearance of conflict. I chose, I ring, ring baby stipend to purchase books. I, I didn't really say still no.
Who, what did you say, Ms. Brown?
Here we go again. I'm trying to talk.
Ms. Brown, please finish. No, Ms., Ms., listen. Look, Ms. Har- Ms., come on, Ms. Brown, please finish. You got two, you got two minutes. I want you to be able to share your thought, please.
Thank you. So I, um, and the tone was set, it, it, it was a, and I am so sad. I, I did not intend to vote no on this summer program, except I could get my question out, so I had no choice. Uh, the books I, I donated to back tonight are for the Calhoun liberal, um, school. Um, and the next month, I will use the final part of my pension, my stipend, to buy books for the public stand for Calhoun Middle School. Uh, it is a, um, it is, it is, um, it, you know, politics and offices. Uh, and this is probably the most interesting board meeting, uh, I have been at. I am, uh, sorry that perhaps because of, um, uh, I don't know what it is, that we might lose four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, but that is, that is who we are. Uh, and so I accept that this is who and what we are. But I try to be as transparent as I can about at least saying I'm giving up my money that was donated to me. I will give it back to the school.
Anyone else?
Yes, on February tenth, I attended the, uh, legislative breakfast, um, from, with I A S B. It was very, very interesting. And, and I'm gonna email everybody, I forgot the brochure. But they talked about, all the legislators were there and they was talking about how, um, the immigrants that are here, they're, um, on the north side right now. And they was just encouraging us to talk to our legislators and our representatives so we can try to get those resources. I do understand board president, she went to Washington and that was the same message that we heard here as well. But at the same token, is here, they're here and they're coming and they're gonna eventually be infused more than just the fifteen we may have in this school district. So just keep your eyes and ears open to the community, to the staff, because they're coming and it's a lot of different moving parts, I would say. Because like the bilingual, we do not have those resources, so we have to try to be creative. And also, we have to use, like Dr. Alexander said, we have to use the money we already have. And along with everything else we trying to put in place for our students. So I just wanted to say that. And last but not least, my two minutes not over. The policy, I'll just say, with the policy, in order for us to do it effectively, um, that, two years ago, I was the board per, um, my president, the policy chair. And we went through each policy and it wasn't drawn out, but we had the discussion and we had an understanding of what the policy were. And some we did change, some we kept the same. So that's all I'm asking as far as a policy, the committee, so you could meet. So we won't have to be talking about this anymore about these discussions. That's all I have. It's on the website, two colon one fifty.
Ms. Love?
Yes. This board, I think, is very toxic and there's a reason for it. We need a new board president. I don't care.
Thank you so much. So, uh, Ms. Maun, can you? So I had the opportunity to go to, uh, Washington DC and basically, I was talking to legislators, um, trying to see what, where funds that the district can, can benefit from. And literally, they're just short. They're not giving out any federal funds. The state is gonna be very short, so basically, again, we have to use what we have and also just the grants and whatnot. Um, I had the opportunity to even go to the House, the Capitol, the House and see Nas Filosi, uh, Maxine Waters, um, Sheila Jackson, uh, even.
Pelosi, Maxine Waters, Sheila Jackson, even had dinner at their place, and also lunch with Jonathan Jackson. Awesome, awesome trip that I've ever had, since I've been on this board, that I was able to literally firsthand talk to these, these legislators, and also be in the House where they make those decisions. Second, or you can flip each one, they can be watching it too. One of the things that I wanted to share, in good, in good light, of education and children, my daughter is at University of Idaho. This is so, this is so exciting for my, myself, my family, my daughter will, will be attending in Florida, a program that she'll be working as a hotshot. And for the ones that don't know what a hotshot is, they're the first ones on the ground to go and fight firefight, forest fires. She will go and cut trees down, she will go be digging trenches, so she is the first from this school, School District 132, to be able to go and be that first black female ever to be a fire smoke jumper. So, out of all of this, at the end of the day, it's about helping our students, bringing science in, that's one thing right now, we're short of. My daughter is at a university that we haven't even given out science to, thank you.
Board president.
Anyway, I wanna move on.
I know, can I just say, Dr. Alexander did ask us...
Excuse me, excuse me. Ms. Story?
He asked, I know my two, I'm just asking, he asked us what can we do to move forward?
Well, we can, we can talk about that later. Right now?
Because they need to move forward with that project with spring break.
Okay.
So, I'm asking the attorney, is it possible, if we can bring it back to the floor and revoke? No.
I think that it's on the agenda tonight, I think you can bring it back for a revote.
Thank you, can we bring it back for a revote?
Okay, so, I guess, who's gonna motion it? Motion by Ms. Story, second?
Second.
For the record, I think we should make a vote, but I remember...
So, A two, A two, we gonna talk about A two, vote on A two, I mean, I to C, I'm sorry. So, it's motion by Story?
And there just, we did ask, I wanted to have questions.
Go question.
And the question is just about moving forward, this is for good mind, that when we have a conversation about, and, and getting approved contractor, that we open that up. I don't know, Ms. Chrisby personally, but she's getting a lot of business to her, and I would make sure that we are also opening a possibility for other vendors with different price points. Had I been able to say that, I couldn't vote it. That's all we did to say.
And we wanna also be mindful, that we get our board packet a week ahead. So, if there was any questions regarding the board packet, any of the items, we need to call the superintendent, because at this point, we, what we do, we put him on the forefront, and not, and catching him off guard, that's not what we are supposed to do. We're supposed to reach out to the superintendent prior to you getting your packet. And so, therefore, he can answer, and you can ask the questions, just for entertainment purposes, but you are already, he would already know the questions that's coming towards him, so just waiting until the board meeting, that could be a little bit problematic, and we stated that, this is what we've been preaching about all the time, and what we are supposed to be learning, is ask the questions prior to, but thank you so much, so we have a roll call.
But before you did that, Madam Chair, can you, just for clarification, there was one board member that asked questions before this board meeting, can you tell the board who that was?
And I'm gonna tell you again.
Consuela Brown.
What you did, you sent questions, when? Yesterday, you're supposed to ask all questions on Tuesday, that Tuesday. And you did not send any questions until the day before a meeting. So, we're not gonna go back and forth, but thank you so much, roll call, John?
Brown?
It wasn't yesterday.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough?
We go on the same thing, yes.
A, C?
C.
Yeah.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Item C, Carrie.
Thank you.
A two.
The A two? Okay. So, we're on A two right now. We have a motion. Motion. Motion by Ms. Dixon. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kimbrough, roll call. Well, you, you got question? Question?
Yes, so, you're gonna let us know that board, board, all the, all board members have paid up?
Yes. Yes. I'm looking to that information and send it out tomorrow.
Okay, is that all? We can do something else?
Since it's not, can we just bring that back? The board stipends that are on this bucket for April, can you put those in the March?
Excuse me.
I think it's just too late.
Excuse me, we have not, we have not, I mean...
I, I don't understand what she's saying, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, I don't understand what you're asking.
Sorry, I, given that sometimes folks are getting money and they're not paying it back, and I'm sorry, that, that question I did not ask, but since we don't, the conference isn't till April, I'm wondering if you just move that, what the accounts, I think it's Story and Harris who are getting stipends for a thousand dollars. So, I'm just proposing that perhaps we bring that back in March, once we've got clarity. I'm going, but I might ask me for a stipend.
Then that's, that's your prerogative, ma'am, I thought you were talking about this. I thought you was asking a question about A two. May I have a motion, John, please?
I've got Dixon and Kimbrough, roll call?
Yeah.
Brown?
No.
Dixon?
This is the panel, this is the panels, A two. Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
A two, Carrie.
Thank you.
Closed session, motion to exit the closed session, be hereby moved that the Board of Education go into closed session for the discussion pursuant to section two C three of the Open Meetings Act to consider the reason establishing or filling a vacancy on the public body information regarding appointment, employment, or dismissal of an employee or officer, contracts, grievances, negotiations pending, threatened, or imminent, imminent, imminent litigation, real estate, student discipline, student, I'm sorry, superintendent's and/or board evaluation performance. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon and second by Story, roll call, John.
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story? Harris?
Yes.
Closed session?
Yes. Did you say yes to Story?
No. Please, it's right on it now, no.
Oh, she said no, okay. Uh, motion Carrie at seven thirty-eight PM.
Motion was, um, no.
We have to reconvene.
Motion reconvene. Motion to reconvene first.
Motion to reconvene and into open session. Now the motion?
Second.
Who first?
Brown.
Moved by Brown?
Second.
And by Story. Roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yeah.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion Carrie at eight forty-five PM.
Approval residency hearing findings for student three, one, one, two, seven. Be hereby moved that the Board of Education find based on evidence and findings contained to the hearing officers' report that student number three, one, one, two, seven is not a resident of the district. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Dixon? And second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kimbrough. Roll call, John?
The question?
Question?
Just, how is this, what we voted...
That was the first hearing.
No, I know, but how is, okay, it's in the recommendation, then we just find that they are not a resident, how do we vote, no, if we do find that they're resident, we vote, I just want to clarify this.
We're voting on whether or not of the attorney's recommendation.
So, so to answer your question, if you, if you believe that they are not a resident, you would vote yes, if you believe they are a resident, you would vote no, if the noes have it, so to speak, or if there's a, if there's, if there's less than, I guess here you would need at least, well, in any event, if there's, if there's more yeses than noes, then they would be found to be not a resident, if there are not more yeses, then they would continue attending the district, does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you both clear.
So...
Well, let me get clarity. You're trying to say, yes, if, yes, if, if they are not in district, no, if you feel they are.
Correct, you are voting, so the vote is on a finding of non-residency, so if you vote yes, that means you believe this student is not a resident of the district.
Okay, so, may I have a motion?
We got it.
I mean, uh...
Roll call.
Yes, Brown?
No.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Approval residency hearing findings for student number two, nine, zero, three, one. Suggested motion, be hereby moved that the Board of Education find based on the evidence and findings contained in the hearing officers' report that the student number two, nine, zero, three, one is not a resident. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second. Second by Kimbrough. May I have a roll call?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Thank you so much, Chair. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second? Second by the story, I mean, you know, Ms. Love first and Story second. At eight forty-nine.
All right, Brown? Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, Absinthe, Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion Carrie.
Thank you.